All right. You, hold on one second. Yes, had the recording. That'll be good. You're good.
All right. Good evening. This is the call to order for the 2022 Canal Winchester City Council Rules Committee. Roll call, please. Mrs. Amick, present. Mrs. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Walker.
Motion to excuse Mr. Walker.
So moved. I'll second it. Mr. Walker did advise me in advance of his either late arrival or his request to be excused. All right. Roll call for that. Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mrs. Amick? Yes. Also in attendance is Amanda Jackson, Finance Director, serving in as Clerk of Counsel this evening, and also Mr. Boggs, our legal advisory. Regarding the July 19, 2021 Rules Committee minutes, any discussion or comments? Okay. If not, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second it. All right. Roll call, Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mrs. Amick? Yes. So the Rules Committee meets annually to discuss what's in the current Canal Winchester City Rules Handbook, and we have been having some requests for changes, and I have proposed a few that you will find in your packet this evening, and we'll walk through those and discuss them, and then go from there. So the first item is about addressing counsel and regarding an amendment to Rule Number 12 of the City of Canal Winchester Council Rules, otherwise noted as hearings before council. Proposed language would indicate whereas members of the public who wish to address counsel shall sign in with the name, address, and topic, whether it be a resolution or ordinance, prior to the start of the council meeting, and will be recognized by the chair during the public comments portion of the regular council meeting. The presiding officer may permit others to address counsel following those who have signed in if time permits. In some recent research, I was able to talk with the Clerk of Counsel in another municipality and also observed their video recording of their council meeting, and this does not seem to be an uncommon practice to have people sign in. And so what would happen procedurally is that there would be a sign-in sheet, I'm pointing, but it would be the sign-in sheet at the entrance to the council chambers, and it would be handed to the chair just a moment prior to the start of the council meeting. And part of this particular item would allow the chair to maintain decorum and efficiency during public comments, and allows counsel to know who is speaking, where they live, and the topic. I know as a council member, I don't always know these things unless the person verbally offers that at the podium. They are required to sign in at the podium, but if they don't say who they are, it's difficult to know. So I will pause there and see, Mrs. Amos, if you have any comments or questions regarding that item.
Just a few. So this is how we do this in my other life. One of the things that I will say that we'll need to add, if we propose to do the sign-in sheet, we need to propose that you cannot add names for anybody not present, so somebody cannot come in and sign somebody else in. We allow people to sign up online, and then they have to check that they're here before we actually add them and give it to the person, the president. Whether we do that or not for city council is our choice, but it does make it easy for people who are going to be arriving right at the nick of time. And then we do, and I don't know, I think it's further along in our rules where we say you cannot direct, and if we don't, it's something we should consider adding. You can't direct a comment to somebody specifically, so I can't. I mean, we've had situations like this where as council member, somebody targets us. So it's something that allows the president to redirect and say, "I'm sorry, but you need to be generic with your comments. You cannot aim them directly at a person or purse parties in this room." So that would just be something we'd need to make sure, but the, I mean, I think it's a good idea having them sign in, and again, it does give, it allows us to make sure. So are you saying that the president would then say, Lori Amick?
Next up is Mrs., you know.
So we would be calling them?
Yes.
Okay. And I think it's a great idea because it is a big problem with it, but we need to make sure they're not signing others in, and that they have to be in attend, you know, in, present in the room prior to us actually starting if they've signed up.
Right. The other, the thing about sign, or doing the online sign-in, because the agenda usually is not presented until late, some people are not, some residents or others that wish to speak may not even realize they wish to speak because they haven't seen the agenda yet. So that's the only hesitation I would have about signing in in advance.
Well, it was just an option. Like, they would, most people would come sign here, but we have a form that we allow them to do it online, saying they're coming, so it gave us a good heads up that somebody was coming, who knew they wanted to talk, and then, of course, the opportunity to sign in when you get here was there as well.
Okay. So how in the, in the order, because the chair would recognize the speakers in the order that they have signed up, would it be administratively, Mrs. Jackson, an issue for you to keep track of who submitted first, or?
If you're talking about online submittals, it'll date stamp it when they sign up, so we'll have an idea of the order that they signed up online. My suggestion would be you just give it a cutoff time of like, I don't know, 3:00 or something, the day of the meeting, and then you know that nobody can sign up online after that time.
Okay.
Give the clerk the time to print that list for the president, and then still have the sign in here, and I guess if you're worried about order, just start with the people who signed in online, and then move to the people that signed in here.
So we are, we're usually opposite. We do the ones that are in person because we know you're there, and then we have a sheet at the desk where if you, so if Jill Amis signed up online, when I get there next to the signup sheet, I would put a check mark next to my name that I've arrived, and if there's no check mark, there's no talking.
Okay.
But it also allows us, the one nice thing is the form that they, the Google form they fill out essentially says, "You have so long to talk, please keep it to, don't talk about people."
Yeah, I like that.
It kind of gives them the what for.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Amos. All right. The next item, and I want to thank Mrs. Jackson, she assisted me in gathering some of the details that are done by other council, councils across the city, to make sure that we were somewhat in line with what the general populace does. The next item is whereas the time for public comment shall be amended to three minutes per speaker. As we looked across eight different communities, and there's one community that's a little in flux, but there was, across eight different communities, there were only three that allowed five minutes, the rest of them allowed three. We're, maybe not tonight, but historically, our agendas have been growing. We've had more and more to talk about. There have been a few occasions where we're pushing the 11:00 PM forced adjournment, and so this would allow council more time for discussion and debate of agenda items. It also encourages the speaker, when they come to the podium, to be articulate and concise with the message they wish to convey to council, helps them get more directly to the point. And then, as I mentioned earlier, three out of eight other communities that surround us all adhere to a three-minute versus a five-minute. Now, thank you, Mr. Boggs, for your comment. Mr. Boggs had indicated that we, the presiding officer, I believe in the current rules, has the opportunity to allow people to go more than the allotted window of time at his or her discretion. So that is already, as I understand, already in the rules, correct?
That is.
That is correct.
Thank you. So I'll pause there, Mrs. Amos, and get your thoughts on that.
I concur with the three minutes. Several of the other council members have mentioned to me prior that they would like to see the three minutes. I do believe it will, we do see a lot of repetitive conversations, and every resident has a lot, you know, all of their opinions are valuable, so we need to make sure that we're giving them all a chance to talk. There's been situations where we've limited the amount of time, and because it was five minutes, it cut quite a few people off and limited it to a very short amount of people that could actually talk. So I think this will help when we do have to limit the time. I do see where Mr. Boggs said that we could, instead of making it the presiding officer's discretion, that we could do a supermajority vote for the extended time, which would take the pressure off of one person having to decide that, which, I mean, we'll obviously have to check with Mr. Milliken to see what his thoughts are as current and see how he feels about it, but not a bad idea, because it does put a lot of pressure on one person to try to make that decision quickly.
It does, however, the fact that we're trying to reduce the amount of time from five minutes to three minutes, and then we would have to pause and call for a vote, right? So did we just discount the reduction by two minutes? So I don't know, we can have more discussion about that as well. The next item is regarding the written comments. So whereas written comments that are submitted to the Clerk of Counsel and published in the packet will not be read aloud, there is nothing in our current rules that say one way or the other, so it's not in the rules. I believe in previous council meetings, it was requested of a council member, and I don't know if the intent for that council member was that this be an ongoing practice or if it was just for that particular evening. But my recommendation would be that we do not take the public comments that are already in the packet, that are already part of the public record, and read them aloud. They're available for anyone to read at any time, so my recommendation would be that we not read them aloud.
I will concur with you. I think, I understand why we did it at the time, but this, you know, then again, we have to try to stick with the three-minute timeframe, but I also think if we're clear and concise that we will not be reading aloud, that they are part of public record, then there's no question to it later. It's clear and concise.
Do we, Mrs. Jackson, do we have that on the, if they actually go and submit a public comment and have it on file, is there anything that says your comments become part of the public record and are, you know, readable by anyone?
I don't believe it explicitly states that, no.
Should we have something like that, or have you ever heard of anyone who said, "Oh, I wouldn't have said this or that," or posted this or that if I had known this was public record? No?
No, not in my ears here.
Okay. Maybe just something to think about as a footnote on the bottom of the form in the future. The next item is whereas the total time allowed for public comments be limited to 30 minutes. My understanding is that there are some municipalities that don't allow any public comments, and I do not want to go there. I personally do not want to go there. It is legal for us to do that, but I'm not in favor of doing that, especially if we're going to reduce it from a five-minute speaking time to a three-minute. So again, I would prefer that we let the topics go where the topics go in reference to public comments. So any comments, Mrs. Amos?
I agree with you. For me, if somebody shows up to talk, we should be listening, so I don't believe that we should be limiting the time.
Okay. Okay. And finally, for changes or amendments, change and amendments to the current council rules, the final item is whereas the presiding officer may call an end to the public comments if it's interfering with the council's ability to address items on the agenda. And so this would give our chair, if we, just as an example, if we were pushing the 9:30 timeframe and we have 15 items on the agenda, this would give the presiding officer, otherwise known as the chair, the opportunity to call an end to public comments. So what are your thoughts about that?
My thoughts, this is a tricky one, because again, I believe when they show up, they should be able to talk. However, I do, I do understand that there are times when we have a hearing, we have this, we have that, so we have lots of things going on. Maybe it's saying if, you know, public comments will end no later than 9:00 PM. Is that something that's doable? Like, if it's not done by this time, there's a set or established parameter, no later than, and I know, this is the hard part, because sometimes we don't start our official meeting until 8:00. So it's not like you can say, "We're going to do an hour," or "We're going to do it at 9:00," because if we don't start till 8:00, then we're capping it. That, that would be hard for me on wording. How would we, I'm okay with them being able to end public comments if it starts, if we realize we're not going to be able to get to our actual agenda, and we need to expedite that, but how do we say that when our time is never consistent?
Right. Yeah, I understood. That's a great question. So I just, you know, and the, you know, I'm, I still play a relatively newbie card and a short timer thus far. I've never seen a situation where getting to the agenda was unlikely. We've always been able to address the agenda, although we have, you know, come relatively close. Can you, and what would happen if we did not get to the agenda or all of the agenda? Is that, that's not a special meeting, correct? You don't call a special meeting after that?
So the way it would happen is we're required to end at 11:00, and we would have to call a meeting for the next day. We resume the next day.
Okay. Resume the next day.
The, if I may, the other option would be to waive that 11:00 rule from the council rules, if you wanted to go a little bit later.
Have you seen us come 11:00?
I mean, I'm not saying that it's an attractive option, but it's a.
Be mindful, Mr. Boggs.
It's another option, yeah.
Some of us are fussy. I'm just kidding. That's a tough one. It's a tough one, only because it's an exceptional case. We don't often see it. Usually, we're done by 9:30. But there is that exceptional case where we have lots and lots of people lined up and should be given their due time to speak, but we also have to, sometimes our business is time-sensitive and has to be handled.
Right. Correct. Could we say something to the effect of, I'm going to pause and acknowledge that Mr. Walker has joined us. Thank you, Mr. Walker. I'm going to just kind of reflect on this for a moment, and can we say, and I realize this is somewhat subjective, can you say in extreme circumstances, the chair may call an end to public comments if the council is at risk of getting to their other agenda items? Is that too vague?
I, yeah, I have concern that that would be vague and subjective as to what constitute extreme circumstances. One, you know, one thought being that if the rules are going to be amended to require sign-in, you know, online as well as at the beginning or prior to the meeting, it should be pretty evident from the outset what kind of public comment length we would have. So, you know, perhaps, I'm intrigued by the idea of this, of like a 9:00 stop time for public comment, and if it is an evening where we have a public hearing or something that stops us from starting our meeting agenda until 8:30 or something, then that rule could be waived based upon how many public comment sign-ins you have by that point. You know, or you can just hold off on taking this kind of aggregate action and see how it goes with sign-ins and with the three-minute limit, and we can always go back and amend the rules if needed.
Yeah. It'll be interesting. Like I said, as we researched other municipalities, this, those two items seem to be somewhat effective for those, for those other organizations, so. Okay. So what I'm, what I'm capturing for this final bullet item is that we'll table this particular item and would amend the rules in the future should we decide to revisit this particular item. So we'll exclude that one from the ordinance. Okay. Any other discussion or comments regarding the previous bullets? Okay. Then I have a couple of items I'd like to discuss that are non-legislative, I think, at this point in time. One is the council vacancy procedure. So my question is, should the process we followed for the vacancy of Ms. Ward and the filling of that vacancy be in the council rules? Our council vacancy procedure is somewhat limited in terms of the process that we would follow. I know that there was questions, not only from council, but also from some of the members of the public about the process that was going to be followed. So what I'm recommending is that we document the steps that we followed for the latest council vacancy and add those to our rules document. So comments?
I definitely feel like we should put it in the rules. We had a lot of questions from the public. Why did you put it out to the public for, to get applications? Is this normal? Is that the normal process? Obviously, with it not being in our rules, it's nothing that we can confirm. It's the way it's been done in the past, so we've been told. None of us have done this before, so we have to take the advice of those who have. But I think by putting it in the rules, it would be great. The other thing would be, I've had people ask if the questions that were asked could be made public in the future, so that people knew what the questions were asked of the candidates. I don't know if that's something that we would consider, but I'm on board with putting it in there and spelling it out, most definitely.
Yeah, I think the, and I, I don't believe it's any secret that just the urgency of the matter and the fact that it was a holiday weekend, the fact that council was going into recess, I think just kind of added to the angst of getting that process underway. So I think having it documented is, is very important. I'm a big advocate for standard operating procedures, and I think this would definitely help to have that, so. Okay. The other item that I want to discuss tonight is Rule 11-C, recording, Record of Proceedings, Meeting Agenda, and this is a question that I have spoken with Mrs. Jackson and Ms. Pierce about this. So the rule is not consistently being adhered to in terms of the way it's written in the rules handbook today. The rules handbook today just says that by the close of business on Wednesday, the draft agenda should be published, and then by noon on Friday, the final should be released. And one of the pieces of feedback that I got was about, "I can't submit a public comment or prepare for a public comment if I don't see the agenda until late on Friday." So that was a piece of feedback that was, was received. So the sunshine rules allow 24 hours, but council rules are different. So Mr. Boggs has informed us the sunshine law requires 24-hour notice to the media of any special meeting. We understand that. It does not have to be any particular timing for regular meetings, other than that there should be a reasonable method for a person to determine when regular meetings are scheduled. Nothing about agendas in the sunshine law. So this is not a request to amend the council rule. This is a request to perhaps tighten up a little bit in adhering to this rule. And once again, I've, I've talked with Ms. Jackson and with, with Ms. Pierce to see if we can improve on that a little bit. And again, some of the reasoning behind this, kind of enforcement of this existing rule, is that it allows time for the public to submit public comments to address specific items on the agenda. And then, when the agendas aren't published and drafted until late Friday, sometimes that can create an environment of distrust with the public. And so the sooner we get out the draft, and I understand completely that business happens, you know, on, all day on Thursday and in the morning of Friday, but I would also think that not that much business happens, that the final agenda can't be, the draft can't be submitted on Wednesday. So I'm going to pause there and see if you have any comments or feedback regarding Rule 11-C.
Okay. So I'm going to, I'm going to twofold this. First, I think it's an educational piece. There is a lot of confusion with people in understanding the agendas, and that's where the sunshine law is imperative. We are not required to explicitly spell out our agenda for the public prior to the meeting. You have to announce that you're having a meeting, you have to have a general agenda, but you don't have to have specific items added to it. And that is an education piece. We need to make sure the public understands there are times when business happens, there are things that are determined that we need to add on, and most things for us are not immediate. There is a one-to-two-to-three read, so it does give the resident the opportunity to come in still and talk. It does still give them a opportunity, an opportunity to come in and submit their public comment or to come in and make their statements. So for me, big part of that's an education piece. The Wednesday portion, so we tried this a few years ago with going a little bit earlier, and I will be honest with you, the city does need the couple of days. Now, maybe it's changed. Ms. Jackson can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, but there is a lot of stuff that businesses are used to not getting their stuff in, or groups are not getting, they're still doing a lot of follow-up. When we posted the agenda on the Wednesdays before, they were pretty vague, which is perfectly fine. It didn't resolve the questions from the community because they were still trying to figure out why we weren't posting, where was all the information? They did not understand that we did not have to post exactly. But when we would post on Wednesdays, it would be vague, and by Friday, several things would have changed. So for council, you had to try to keep up with what had changed or figure out sometimes what had changed, because the city staff, while trying to make sure that we understood what was going on, it was a constant towards the end of getting stuff in. So, and like I said, Ms. Jackson can correct me, but for me, it seemed very hard for the city, with everything that came in towards the end of the week, for them to get this in perfect condition for a Wednesday publication. Now, I'd be. Now, I'd be fine with a general, but a general is not going to be sufficient for the community.
Am I, am I permitted to speak?
Absolutely.
No, I know I'm the third, but I, yeah, there's a kind of, some of what I remember too, Lucas Hare or some of the directors would, some of the staff in the city would have other things that would come in on Friday, whether it be Andrew Moore or Lucas Hare, and those changes would happen, you know, sometimes late. And, but like you said, if it's general, then it could be added and then resubmitted, but that's what would have to be done. Then, is that, is that correct? A lot of, quite a bit of the time, it seems like there was reports and things that came in on Friday.
So you have to understand, we have daily duties we have to do. You know, we don't spend every day between meetings preparing for the next meeting. You know, between that and if somebody takes time off, that cuts into things and all. So sometimes, yeah, we're running up against that deadline for one reason or another, whether we're waiting on outside information, whether, you know, we just personally haven't been in the office. We do run up against it. I think when Mrs. Amick and Jordan and I spoke, you know, we're going to, we want to try to get you guys this information as early as possible, but we also don't want to confuse you and we don't want to confuse the public by putting out too many drafts that aren't final. And so we need to find that, the way to make sure that we're still being very transparent with the public, but not causing extra confusion because we have seen that happen. Like Mrs. Amos was saying, if we put something out on Wednesday and it's a little bit more general, it's just going to be titles. There's not going to be attachments to it. And then that almost, it doesn't give enough information sometimes for people to really understand what that resolution or ordinance or whatever is trying to accomplish. And it raises more questions than if we had just waited and put everything in there at once. Does that, does that make sense?
It does.
But I completely understand where you're coming from about a draft.
I mean, and, you know, the public comments is only one piece of it. There is an expectation by our public that we, as council members, come to the council meeting prepared. So we have read, researched, digested, examined, whatever we need to do to prepare for an intelligent discussion about the matter at hand. And if you get it at five o'clock, I know I personally, I worked the Rib Fest, you know, Friday night, and then I was at a, for me personally, I was out of town all weekend. And so, you know, this morning, it was like up at the crack of dawn trying to read, digest. I had a couple of questions about some things that had changed, and, you know, every, there wasn't a ton of opportunity for me to have any further discussion. So naturally, I, you know, that's where, why we have work session. So that's just, I'm just trying to give council and the public a little more time to be prepared for a Monday evening meeting. So I appreciate anything that you can do to work on that particular adherence. And, and I'm not foolish. I fully understand that things happen at the last minute, so, thank you.
I will say, there's been a couple of times when we've had emergency things or things that are coming quicker than we thought they were, where we weren't going to have that 30-day read. And a lot of times, we'll get those, usually an email like, hey, this has come down the pipeline, or Lucas has called me on several of them and said, hey, this is coming down the pipeline. It's going to be quick and fast.
Right.
So that always helps. Because like, you know, like you said, we try to read every single thing you got, all hundred and some pages of them sometimes.
It also puts less pressure on the city staff for that exact reason. So, you know, if you see the agenda at five o'clock on a Friday and you want to ask Mr. Hare or Ms. Jackson or someone, you know, for some clarification, or something is missing or there's some confusion, heaven forbid us try to track down Ms. Jackson during her vacation or something like that. So I just appreciate anything that could be done to try to improve that slightly, so. Okay. Any other comments, questions, or anything you would like to address as it pertains to the city council rules?
Mrs. Amick, for, I guess, my benefit and perhaps even Mr. Boggs in drafting anything that you would like to see presented to council as a whole for consideration, can we kind of do a quick summary of what you would like us to update in the rules?
Certainly. So changing the, so going back to the sign-in process. Scroll back up here. I think that we, as a committee, would agree that we want there to be a sign-in process and that we will allow people to complete an online sign-in as well as the sign-in just prior to council start at the door of council chambers.
Okay.
So that was very wordy, but I think you got it.
Yes. And then also, please add the language that they cannot, they must be present, and they cannot sign somebody else's.
Yes, right.
Okay.
And then the cutoff would be at like 3:00 PM.
Okay.
If, for the online sign-in sheet. They can't add the others' names. Mrs. Amos just said that. And that not aiming the comments at a particular person.
Okay.
The next item was the three-minute amendment from five minutes to three minutes, and the committee would recommend that we move forward with that.
Okay.
This is not really a change because it's not in there, but we are in agreement that we won't read public comments aloud that have been submitted electronically.
Are we able to put that in there, though, that comments submitted electronically will not be read aloud, but will be determined as part of public record? Mr. Boggs?
You could include in your rules that public comments will, public comments, I should say, written public comments submitted online will not be read aloud at the meeting, but are matters of public record.
I think if, if we define it, I believe it gives us more, it gives us the ability to say, no, this is the rules. We're going to follow the ones in the rules.
Right. Yeah, it would make clear to everybody upfront that if you want it to be presented at the meeting, you need to be there physically present to do it.
Correct.
Okay. And then regarding the, the total time, we've decided to table that particular item to see how the three minutes in the sign-in goes in advance. So we will not add that to any formality at this time. And then we also agreed that we would put, and I'm sorry, I don't have the specific reference in the rules handy about putting the rule for office vacancy in the council rules. So, Mr. Boggs, if you could perhaps help us craft the appropriate language for that, it would be much appreciated.
Mrs. Amick?
Yes, sir.
Was the, was the, was the one that being tabled, and I'm sorry, I'm late.
We had discussed a couple of items about, should we put a 30-minute time limit on the public comments section of the council meeting? And at this time, we've agreed not to, to put that forward for consideration by council.
Okay. And there was one other thing that I read that I had time to read over this weekend and digested, I think, was you had another point, and was that addressed on the, if the person, the chair, has to decide if, if a person is at the podium and they're wanting more time, then that three or that five minutes that would be there, that I believe that you had mentioned something about having, instead of putting that pressure maybe on the chair of having council as a whole make that decision at that moment?
So part of the discussion from earlier this evening was, part of going from the five minutes to the three minutes is to become more efficient with the time. And so if we have to pause to do a vote about whether we're going to allow that or not, we've, we're sort of defeating the purpose. So right now, we're going to leave it at the presiding officer's discretion.
That was a part of that, that was tabled then?
Correct, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Boggs, the vacancy portion and defining how we fill vacancies, can that be added to Rule Number Four under vacancies? Or does it need to be a separate line item?
I, I think it'd be, it could be drafted to be included in Rule Number Four.
I'm just thinking for clarity purposes. I think if we kept it all together, it'd be beneficial.
I, I agree, Mrs. Amos. It's, sometimes it's, you kind of have to, whether you're looking at the charter or the council rules, sometimes you have to bounce around and cross-reference one from another, even within the council rules. So I agree, it would be nice to have that always the same, within the same section if possible. Okay. Anything else for this evening's discussion? Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Show move.
Second.
Thank you for your time. We're adjourned.
We're going to do a roll call.
Do a roll call. Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mrs. Amick?
Yes.
Now you can adjourn.
Meeting is adjourned.
Time out, 5:39.
I know, I wasn't sure if we could, like,
Pichay, what's going on?
I didn't think.
Ms. Jackson, are we off?
Are we gonna have a panhandle? I thought we did. Are you sure?
This is the call to order for the August 1st, 2022 Canal Winchester work session. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Amick?
Present.
Mrs. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Buskirk?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Milliken?
Here.
Mr. Shea?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
At this time, we have the pleasure of an oath of office. I'd like to turn this over to Steve Buskirk and Cornell Robinson to administer the oath. Thank you.
All right, thank you, council members.
Do you want to read from this, or do you have it memorized?
I have it memorized.
Okay.
Memorized while referencing my handy pocket gun. It's a little smaller. I really appreciate, though, y'all inviting me to be part of your meeting to issue the oath of office to Steve Buskirk. Steve and I have known each other for 29 years. Steve worked at the Franklin County Engineers' Office that amount of time, and we have worked on many projects together through those years. Currently, Steve Buskirk is our utility coordinator. Very big job, lot of responsibility, but he does great work at that. And in general, I think that our system of government is the best in the whole world. But it takes folks who are willing to serve, as you are and as Steve Buskirk is. Therefore, I appreciate his willingness to apply for this position and to have been selected to fill that role. Representative Brown and I have worked on many projects together. Appreciate his work, his collaboration. I feel like the County Engineers' Office and Canal Winchester, we've worked on some projects together as well. And we've even enjoyed participating in your all's touch a truck events, touch a tractor events, and that's very important. It might sound, well, like a little bit too much fun, but we've got to inspire the youth to consider such trades, and that really captures their interest when they're in a mode of just minds of sponges. So I'm talking about a lot of different aspects here, but it all rolls into participating on council, the good work that you all do, and I'm very pleased and happy that you chose Steve Buskirk. With all that being said, I'm ready to swear at Steve. So if you would, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I am Steve Buskirk.
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The codified ordinances of the City of Canal Winchester.
The codified ordinances of the City of Canal Winchester.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge-
Will faithfully and-
Impartially.
Impartially.
Discharge. And perform all the duties incumbent upon me.
And perform all the duties incumbent upon me.
As a council member of the Canal Winchester City Council-
As a councilman of Canal Winchester City Council.
According to the best of my ability and understanding-
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Don't worry, Mr. Buskirk, everybody messes up that line.
Congratulations, thank you, Cornell. Also in attendance tonight, we have Mayor Ebert, Development Director Lucas Hare, and Finance Director Ms. Amanda Jackson. Brings us to request for council action tonight, Resolution 22-028. Clerk, please read the title.
A resolution approving the establishment- Hold on, let's start over. A resolution authorizing the establishment of the Gender Road/Winchester Pike Intersection Custodial Fund.
That would be Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. As you may recall, over the past several months, we've had several developers in here discussing their developments along the Bixby Road/Winchester Pike area, and as part of that, some of them have either been required or offered to put funds proportionate to their share of traffic impact on the Gender Road/Winchester Pike intersection into necessary improvements to that intersection. In order for us to accept those funds from them, I need a fund in my accounting system to put them in, so this would establish that fund to record those receipts. This is called a custodial, or what was formerly known as an agency fund, meaning that it will be used for nothing but that. It is not really city money. Technically, we are just holding it as an agency until the project commences, and then those funds will be used for the project. We have two other agency funds currently on the books. One is for Meyer Drive, and the other is for Green Gate Boulevard out in the Dally Road area. This is a requirement of the Auditor of State's office as well, for us to have council approve the establishment of this fund.
Okay.
Ms. Jackson, is this a portion of the $4.2 million, like, just as an example, the North Point, the $4.2 million in road improvement? We would be pulling out that piece that was towards the Gender Road?
I'm not sure if the $4.2 included this portion or not. I would have to defer to Mr. Hare on that, but-
Yeah, this would be for the $500,000 that more point has agreed to contribute to this intersection, so when they're applying for their permits, permission plans, Ms. Jackson will then know where to allocate that fund. So this, for that project, for Sheets, for the projects that are improving, we would hold that until Columbus is prepared to do the improvements, and then we would transfer the funds to the city of Columbus.
So we're not sharing a fund with the City of Columbus? We're holding our pieces, and then upon Columbus? Now, are we pushing to have Columbus moving this along? Are we, what part do we have in making sure that this gets done in a timely manner?
We've been meeting with the City of Columbus, Mr. Peebles and I, to talk about improvements there. They're completing a safety study of Gender Road from Winchester Pike up to I-70, and so once they complete that safety study, it'll explore alternatives for the entire entirety of Gender Road, including that intersection, and then they'll determine a path forward in terms of future design.
And who is doing the study? Is that a paid study, or is that one done by the city?
They have a consultants, I believe. The selected consultants was MS Consultants that's doing that.
And that was who Columbus chose?
The City of Columbus, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And Lucas, with, at that intersection, would the new building that Columbus approved, 527,000 square foot warehouse there next to Wyler's, would that, I would assume, add additional traffic to Gender in that?
Yeah, I believe that they had a $200,000 plus-
$285,000 is what I think I saw.
Yeah.
So they're contributing to that, that project?
Correct. Yeah, the first contribution to it would be Sheets, and that's going to be a $258,779. that they're required to contribute. So each entity is going to be contributing. I don't know how Columbus, the City of Columbus, holds their funds and how they segregate those funds, but this is how we would do it in Canal Winchester.
Okay.
And just to reconfirm, all of the apartments that are getting, because I know there's 110 unit in that little area, but all of these apartments that are coming up along Gender, they are not generally paying into this fund?
I have not seen documentation where they have had them do so, but that would be up to the City of Columbus in their development process.
Sounds like something we need to check into. It's unfortunate they're not paying into it with the number of traffic, but they'll be adding to that situation.
Mr. Hare, if you can visualize for a moment, like a barometer, to say, okay, the pinnacle is here, this is how much it's going to cost to do that, we have all of these parties contributing dollars towards this project, who keeps track of where we are relative to the total estimated cost of the project? How will we know how far out we are?
The City of Canal Winchester, with the three projects contributing, will be $1.15 million, of about an estimated $6 million improvement. The City of Columbus has contributions defined as well, so we're probably up into the $1.50 range, so a quarter of the project being funded. So that would help, obviously help, if it's specifically dedicated to that intersection, to move that as a priority in their Gender Road improvements.
Can we get any help from the Franklin County Engineers' Office?
I mean, it's been discussed in the past. Franklin County Engineer was able to work to get some right-of-way that goes north of the Waffle House, and that's one of the alternatives being explored, is whether Winchester Pike gets relocated to north of Waffle House to align with the opposing intersection to the neighborhood there, and so that signal will get relocated as part of that project. So that is one of the alternatives that the City of Columbus is exploring, that Franklin County Engineer assisted with probably 20 years ago.
Be great. Can you help from Representative Brown?
What's the percentage?
I'm not done.
Oh, sorry.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Do we get the interest on that funds?
Do we get interest on those funds?
When they're in this custodial account, does the interest, is it revenue to the city, or does it stay in the custodial account?
It stays in the custodial account.
Okay. Go ahead.
Ms. Amis?
Thank you. What percentage of that area is Canal Winchester versus Columbus?
Of which area?
Of the Gender Road intersection that we're looking at.
We don't, the City of Canal Winchester doesn't have any of the intersection. So we control Gender Road south of the intersection, but the intersection itself's all within the City of Columbus.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm guessing Mrs. Jackson will be able to answer this one, and I don't foresee this being an issue here, but just in general knowledge, with funds like this, what would ever happen to this fund if this project was never, came to fruition?
I'm going to look at Mr. Boggs, because I have never encountered that in my years.
Okay. I guess I don't foresee it happening, but I'm just curious. If this project never happened, what would happen to the fund, since it's already, it's earmarked for this particular project, and we can't use it for anything else? It's not city money, as you said, so.
If that were to occur, we would have to come back to council and work with the developers who contributed to the fund to find some other use for that, whether that be another project that benefits those properties, or whether that simply be a return of those funds to the contributing entities. But that would have to be, that would have to be run through council, given the limited scope of this fund.
Thank you.
Anything further? Do I have a motion to move to full council?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Shea?
Second.
Second by Ms. Amis. Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Amis?
Yes.
Mrs. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Buskirk?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Brings us to Resolution 22-029. Clerk, please read the title.
A resolution to repeal Resolution Number 22-026, authorizing a 42-inch fence at 70 East Columbus Street.
I'll turn this to Ms. Amis.
All right. So first, I want to say this is not in any way, shape, for the resident. For me, this is an issue of whether we did the right thing. I'm just going to kind of play out the scenario. So after the meeting, pondered it, couldn't seem to come to terms with what we had done, talked with Mr. Moore over in Planning and Zoning, and this, so I kind of, we came up with a timeline, and I wanted to kind of go over it with everybody. So the original request was made in April of 2021. It was to change the wood siding to an aluminum-based, which looks like wrought iron. There was, and at the time, when this was originally brought up, I'm sorry, not the council, but to Landmarks. And at the time, there was the right-of-way issue, so they didn't really make a decision on it. It came back to Landmarks August 24th of 2021, and it was, at the time, tabled, and then the family was upset, and so Landmarks stayed for an hour during new and old business and reviewed visuals of fences, came up with a plan with the family, but spent about an hour with the family, coming up with a plan that would work for both Landmarks, that they were willing to approve, and for the family. But the right-of-way was still an issue, so in October of last year, it came to council and was denied, the right-of-way, in November of 2021. They submitted the variance at the same time that they had applied to council. On October 21, they had applied for the variance, but at the time, did not have the var, so they applied for the variance on the height at that time. Because they did not have the right-of-way, it was returned to them, and no further action was taken. They didn't pursue the variance, and they didn't pursue, because council had already denied the right-of-way, they didn't pursue it any further. Then it came back again, that's when we heard it, and in the interim, they had been back to Landmarks to try to get approval for a different fence, other than the one that they spent an hour determining. In June, they came back to Landmarks again, asked them to reconsider the request. Landmarks did not change their mind, but Landmarks did make the recommendation to Planning and Zoning to approve the variance of the 42-inch fence. So Landmarks had given them an approval on the fence that both the family and Landmarks had picked out, and made the recommendation to Planning and Zoning to approve the 42-inch fence. On that June date, Andrew received a check and the application for Planning and Zoning, that's this year, June of this year. He received the check and the application for Planning and Zoning to get on their agenda for the variance of the 42-inch fence, which was recommended by Landmarks Committee. Turned around the July meeting that we had and asked for us to go ahead and approve ours, which, in my mind, and maybe not in everybody else's, but in my mind, we trumped what we've asked our Landmarks, what we've, we have picked people to serve on Landmarks, we have picked people to serve on Planning and Zoning, and we trumped them by not allowing the process to take place. There was an application in place, there was a recommendation to approve the 42-inch fence that we weren't aware of, and I just feel like we overstepped, and we should have let the process play out beforehand. In the interim, there is another resident who will be coming our way, who already has a fence, and somebody filed a complaint against them, and their understanding is if we did this one, that we should probably consider theirs as well, because they were not aware they were in the Preservation Historic District. So I think we set ourselves up, we put ourselves in a bad spot. In my mind, either way, we should have allowed this to go through the proper steps. It had not been before Planning and Zoning yet for the 42-inch variance, which, again, did have the recommendation from Landmarks to approve. So that's why I submitted this, because I really do feel like we overstepped the people that we put in place to do their job. So, that's the timeline, and I'll let everybody else have general conversation.
My first question is, I would like to know if, if we do repeal this resolution, where is Mr. Demkowitz in the process with Landmarks? Is he, is he right in line with the application that he submitted? Does he have to start anything over?
So as far as Landmarks go, he is perfect, he is done. There was a fence picked out, there was a fence agreed upon by Landmarks and the family at the original meeting that they sat down and planned together, and Landmarks has made the recommendation to Planning and Zoning to approve the 42-inch variance on their property, now that they have received the right-of-way.
So he's, I just want to make sure I've got the facts situated. The June meeting that you spoke of, that was the Landmarks?
That was the Landmarks meeting.
That had the 200 attached to it?
The
Was it the application fee or something?
The application? Yes. At that meeting, Mr. Moore received the application, the original application from October. He received again in June with the check to get onto the Planning and Zoning the next meeting.
And that next meeting was?
Would be July.
July. And so
It's unfortunate, our timing of being off for two weeks to leave this, because
So did that, did that meeting proceed with him on the agenda, and he, he was able to be heard at that meeting?
So because we had already approved our documentation, he was not required to go to Planning and Zoning. So right now, Mr. Moore has his application and his check and has not returned it yet.
Okay. So then, if we do repeal, he has his check, he can go right to Planning and Zoning and pick up right where he left off, and the worst of the situation is that we just kind of delayed him a month?
Right, which stinks. I mean, I'm not going to lie, I think it does stink. It's unfortunate, but I think because there's another complaint for another fence, and the question lies in, you know, did we do, we overtrumped the people we put in place.
I have a question on that. Where is Mr. Demkowitz now in the purchase of that fence?
That I do not know, and I apologize. I talked to Mr. Moore about it, he was not aware of where they stood yet, either.
Yeah, I see where the confusion came in, because the meeting before, when we had met, there was no resolution, then a resolution came, and then the other issue came up with the bar over the spikes, that came up, which, that, after we got through that, then we were asking questions about the height. I think it was, went from 36
Correct.
And then we were approving 42. But P and Z would only approve the 36.
So the actual style of the fence was back on August of 2021, the actual style was, the family and Planning and Zoning came to an agreement on a style. There were two other attempts to get Planning, or Landmarks to change that style, and it did not happen, so they stuck with the original one that they had all agreed upon. But Landmarks did make the recommendation to Planning and Zoning to approve the 42-inch variance. So the recommendation was there, he never went in front of Planning and Zoning, the resident never went to Planning and Zoning to fulfill that hearing request.
So it looks like if it, if it was repealed, he would be able to get it, he would just have to wait the time to get it.
Ultimately, it would be up to Planning and Zoning whether they approved it or not, but the recommendation was there.
And where is he? It's really important, I think, for me to know where, as far as I'm concerned, where is he on the purchase? And that, we don't know that right now. Has he purchased it since we've gone to this point? I'm done. Thank you.
Mrs. Amis, is he aware that this is an item on agendas, this is an item on our agenda? Is he aware of that?
I'm not sure if Mr. Demkowitz is aware. Mr. Moore and I had conversations over the past couple of weeks to try to figure out if this was something that we should be pursuing, and if we were in error. I really needed to establish if it was something, because one of the pieces we kept hearing is that, that we delayed them, the city had delayed them, but it's not the case. So I don't know if Mr. Moore reached out to Mr. Demkowitz or not. I did not.
So I would tend to agree with Mr. Walker. We kind of need to understand where this process is at, because when Mr. Demkowitz walked away from this meeting on July 5th, if I was him, I would have gone out July 6th and ordered my fence. So we need, we really do need to understand what has been communicated to him and when. That's my first question. My second question is, assuming this moves forward to go to Planning and Zoning, we have his application for the 42-inch fence, we have his check, is he, is everything in line for him to present for next Monday's P and Z meeting?
So
I think it's next Monday, correct?
This, it would go on the next available agenda that we provide public notification for, so it wouldn't actually be on until the September agenda.
Okay.
So there's no way for us to put it on the next agenda?
No, we require public notification for variances and neighbor notification, and there's been none of that that's taken place.
With his current approval from the City Council, does he even need to go to Planning and Zoning at this point?
No. The only, the next step would be issuing a fence permit. The resolution which was passed goes into effect 30 days after it passed, so it would go into effect on August 4th, and so we'd issue a permit if applied for at that time.
Could they have applied for a permit already, or they cannot until the 4th?
There's none listed, I've looked.
So no permit has been pulled?
So assuming it goes before Planning and Zoning, it can't go before September, and it's unclear what Planning and Zoning's ruling would be at that September meeting. So that was question two. And then question three, I've read some of the documentation and emails that have come through, and I'm a little confused about the spike top versus the flat top. So if the application before Planning and Zoning is for the 42-inch fence, did Landmarks already approve his request for the flat, flatter top, which kind of protects the spikes? Has that been approved by Landmarks?
I did not see the final. All I can tell you is that during the August of 2021 meeting between the family and Landmarks, they, they searched for an hour online until they found one that met both the family and Landmarks approval.
Because what I saw in the, in email communication had a picture of a fence still showing the spikes that was approved. And so I want to be careful and not belabor this process or, or make any mistakes about the 42-inch fence and the spikes. I think we need to be absolutely clear what he's requesting, and who has to approve which piece.
So before us at the last meeting, the only thing we approved was the 42-inch variance. We did not approve the spike top. If you'll recall, they said, "We will just go with the one that was approved," when he stood up at the podium. So the, the design is not in question, it's the size, the 42-inch. You are correct, we don't know how Planning and Zoning will rule, I hate that it would be September. You had asked me a question of the application process, so his application was submitted, it was not complete, but Mr. Moore did complete the application for him so that it could be submitted.
Mr. Shea?
So I get confused. Old Town is the bigger area and Historic Area is smaller, correct?
The Preservation District is larger than the Historic District.
True.
So the Old Town guidelines say, any fences in front yards must be wood pickets or wrought iron that does not exceed 42 inches in height?
And we don't technically call it wrought iron anymore, but yes, you're right.
Well, that's what the words say.
I know.
So that, is there another? And then, I mean, it's really convoluted, because you go through this, and there's no fence designation for the Historic District. So I don't understand why the height was an issue. My understanding was, is, well, actually, my understanding of this was very confused, because this is one of the most convoluted things I've ever seen in my very short term on City Council. But I mean, this poor family had to go before three separate government bodies for jurisdiction, were incredibly frustrated, and maybe, and maybe they didn't do everything right, but who does do everything right? I mean, we're here to take care of our citizens and look out for our residents, and I thought that's what we did, was simplify his process so he could get on down the road with his fence that he's been trying to build for a year. That being said, I personally received notice as a member of this legislative body of this ordinance today at 4:20, and had it put onto the agenda. That, my notice is, you know, that's 100 minutes before this minute starts. I tried to call Mr. Demkowitz, but I don't have his phone number. I think the gentleman should at least have the opportunity to speak to this, and I would move that we tabled this until the next meeting.
So two things. One, if we don't push it forward, if we did it, we have to do it tonight. It has to be by emergency. So if we don't, it's fine because I totally understand where you're coming from, that the resident may or may not, we don't know if they bought the fence. Like, I understand completely those concerns. My biggest thing was just making sure that everybody understood that the city did not neglect their responsibilities. The, we over-trumped, and by the way, the 42-inch. So it's 42 inches in the, in the landmarks book, but it's 36 inches by the variance.
By the zoning code.
By the zoning code.
Correct.
That is why, and you are right. It is convoluted, not clear, but that's what it is. So our zoning code says 36 and our plan, our historic says the 42. But I, I do struggle with the fact that he may not know. And I, I don't have Mr. Moore here to answer that, so I can't tell you fairly.
Well, and furthermore, it's been a month. I mean-
I don't know what conversations he had. I mean, we talked about it a couple of weeks ago with him, so.
I think that the bigger concern is that, you know, have, what have we done in terms of precedent? Because we now know or believe to know that there is another case that could very well come to council in the future. And so I'm concerned about that. We, we should have followed a process. It's my opinion, we did not follow a process or direct the homeowner to follow that process, and I am concerned about the precedent that we are setting.
And that's the biggest part.
Ms. Amos, is, in light of the discussion you've heard thus far, is it your intention to table this this evening or vote on it if we, if we move it forward?
Well, if we table it, it's dead because we have only 30 days to pull this back.
Okay, Ms.-
So we don't have, I mean, that's, and that is the downside. If this had been two weeks ago, we could have had this conversation, brought Mr. Demkowitz in, had him go through planning and zoning. We could have, but our vacation impeded.
Yeah, I, I agree with Mr. Shea that, you know, we'd be doing him a terrible disservice if we moved forward with this and not allow him an opportunity to come in here. To Ms. Samick's point, I look at this as, you know, this was something that was overlooked before we were even on this body. I think I looked at this as a, an attempt to right a wrong. I agree with you. I was worried about the precedent. And, you know, maybe, myself included, the vote we made last time was incorrect. And I'm, I'm willing to own up to that mistake if we view it as a mistake. But like I said, I think we're, we were trying to right a wrong here. And, you know, if, if the next person comes in and asks questions for me, you know, I'll be more than happy to have that conversation with them and apologize to them that unfortunately, this is the situation we find ourselves in. That's, that's kind of how I'm viewing this currently.
Yeah, and like I said, if council's not on board, I completely understand what the timeliness of it and the vacation. I, I completely understand. The big thing is there was no error on the city's part. They did follow the timeline. The step of going to planning and zoning, that was not done, and we should have, we should have forced that. So going forward, I mean, if we're going to take the hard road, we need to take the hard road. It's hard now that we have another complaint in the works to, to just, you know, have those conversations with residents and be like, "Well, if you push hard enough, you might get it." And we really want people to go through the process because we do choose our committees to do a job. So that's all I ask. If council does not seem to be on board with it, we do not have to move the resolution. It can end here. And I appreciate Mr. Boggs working on it and getting it prepared for us. My biggest thing is we've got to understand as a council, we should not be overstepping our bounds, and we didn't, in my opinion. One of seven.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Shea.
May I? Hey, Mr. Boggs, so here we have a clear conflict of law, like the Old Town guidelines say 42 inches, the planning and zoning guidelines say 36 inches. What happens in that case?
So the 36 inches is in the codified ordinances, and so that prevails over the guidelines.
One's law, one's guide.
Okay, very good. All right.
One's suggestion.
And then, that's only for front, correct?
Yes.
I think that's right, yeah.
Correct.
And the landmarks guidelines apply to the yard and hole, and the zoning code is 36 inches if it's in front of the hole. It can be up to six feet behind the hole.
Behind the hole.
Okay, thank you.
But, but the front of the, of the home is on the side as well as what you would look like on the front plus down Trine Street, correct?
In the Demkowitz's circumstance, both are free to those front yards because it's on a corner.
Didn't they also go to planning and zoning, and planning and zoning told them that they couldn't do anything until they had a right of way from us?
No, so they-
Yes, planning and zoning can approve an application in the road right of way.
So they were told they had to come to us? That's how they ended up here because of the right of way issue, if I remember correctly?
Right.
So Mr. Moore said that they never actually went in front of planning and zoning, that they, he returned the check and the application and told them, "There's no use if you don't have the right of way." So they've actually not been in front of planning and zoning for hearing. That being said, under new and old, we're going to talk about the Old Town guidelines that are 10 years old.
Can someone remind me where a resident would read about the, if you're on a corner lot, that your side yard is also considered your front? Where would that be noted?
I believe, I'm speaking from memory here, but I can look it up momentarily. I believe it's in the definitions section of the yard definitions in the zoning code.
Okay, thank you.
So it's, should be chapter 1133.
I'm sorry, Mr. Here, can I hear you?
Chapter 1133.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Boggs, and I, I mean, do we just do a poll, a poll to see if they want to move it forward? Is that where we stand, or do we?
Actually, there's a motion on the table.
Who motioned? Did you?
I did.
Well, that was nice of you.
It was.
Yeah, so if there's a motion and a second, then there'd be a vote on whether to move it forward to full council.
No, I really did motion for it about 10 minutes ago.
The table?
To table it?
Yes.
I didn't hear a second.
Oh, there's a motion to table.
That's because we kept talking.
So the, the motion is to table it?
Correct.
So just so we're all clear, if we table it, it goes away. There's nothing, which is fine. I just want to make sure we all understand that. There's no returning-
I can't help but return back to this, especially this time right now, when such a fence might need to be ordered. And if that fence is ordered and there's money being put down or paid in full, and then they would turn it down, where, you know, that, that's, that's a big concern of mine.
I haven't spoken yet. So I, I mean, I agree, this is a tough situation, but I think we've boxed ourselves in. I agree with Mr. Walker that we, we, Mr. Demkowitz and his wife left thinking that he could go and order a fence last night and had council's approval for that. And, you know, I don't know how we could, at this point, I think it would be reckless on our part to, to say and overturn that at this point. However, I sympathize with Ms. Amos's that we've been talking about this now, what, like 30 minutes or so? We don't want to become the planning and zoning committee of Canal Winchester, and that's a problem. So I think we're going to have to get the word that this was a one-time thing that, because this gentleman had to come before us to get the zoning changed or the right of way issue changed, that that made it, you know, sort of council at that point had, got involved in it. That situation you're talking about, I don't think has to. So I think we just say that, you know, that's why this one came. Or you're right, we're going to have a lot of people coming here with those issues and saying, "You, you know, I didn't get the answer I wanted there. I'll come here." So that's, that's my two cents. So.
And I honestly, I'm okay with tabling it as long as we understand going forward. We really need to let the people that we have selected do their jobs, and we need to take some time to review the landmarks guidelines. They are 10 years old. So if the motion is to table and we're all in agreeance, let's just make sure that we follow what we should be doing.
Fair enough. All right, do I have a second for the table?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Amos. Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mrs. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Buskirk?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
And thank you again, Mr. Boggs, for your time on that.
You're welcome.
All right, brings us to resolution 22-030. Clerk, please read the title.
A resolution memorializing the appointment of Steve Buskirk to fill a vacancy in the council pursuant to section 3.08 of the city charter.
This one's a tough one.
We have some discussion-
Mr. Chair, if I may, just to be very clear about a couple of items here. One thing is that this should not be taken as anything more than simply memorializing the action that council already took on July 5th, appointing Mr. Buskirk. But because under your rules of council, it talks about appointments being made by resolution, whereas in the charter, it talks about appointments to council being made by motion. You had the power and did appoint him July 5th, but we wanted to have this as the record memorializing that so it's not just having to hunt through minutes to find it. You have a document that we can be, we can point to.
Mr. Boggs, is that something we need to change in either the rules or charter to mesh them, since we are doing a rules review?
That, the rules would be easier to change on that front certainly, so I can send some language your way on that.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Do I have a motion to move to full council?
So moved.
So move by Mrs. Amos.
I'll second it.
Second by Mrs. Amick. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mrs. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Buskirk?
For the state.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Brings us to our first ordinance tonight, ordinance 22-028. Clerk, please read the title.
An ordinance to require notification of location in the historic district and preservation district.
I don't know if it-
Mr. Shea?
Mr. Shea?
This one's me. Well, I called down and asked when the last time, if we had, if we had a way of letting people know that they lived in historic or preservation district. And I was told that we did that once, but the last time we did it was 2018. And I thought that was a long time ago. So I thought that we should go ahead and have the city mail out to the residents that are in the preservation district annually. I noticed that they are in the preservation districts and that they have special codes and guidelines that they have to follow. That is the purpose of this ordinance, to prevent future problems of people saying, "I didn't know I was in the preservation district." And I think as a city, we would be doing them a favor by proactively notifying them.
I'm going to agree because the next fence one that we have coming up, that was one of the main issues. The family wasn't aware that there were special rules for the downtown area.
Need to blame the realtor.
I don't know who that was. I'm not going to blame anybody.
I'm just kidding.
Ms. Jackson, do you have a way and to determine who, like, I've been in my house for many, many years. I would not need another postcard because obviously I've been set once. Do you have a way to weed out through the auditor's site who has moved in recently? Or is, and maybe Mr. Shea is thinking, everybody needs annual reminders, but cost-wise, is there a way to weed this out through the auditor?
Probably not through the auditor, but we could probably do it through our utility billing system because that tracks a move-in date. But I'd have to play around a little bit.
That would make me happy if we weren't excessively billing, spending a lot of money on postage for people who have been there years.
I think it's important that every address in that district receives the annual notification, even given the cost. Simply because if you are caring for an elderly parent or someone who isn't perhaps of sound mind and body, but, and you're living or cohabitating at that, the person who is kind of facilitating the maintenance of that property and whatnot needs to be aware.
Good point.
How many properties are in that district?
I'm not sure. I'm looking for the last, generally in the past, we've done these by door hangers. We generally do them every, I would say, two to three years. The last time we did that was 2019. But I don't see the address list on here. I would say it's somewhere probably around 300 properties.
Okay.
Oh, that's horrible.
And Mr. Shea, you said the preservation district is bigger than the historic district, correct?
That was my read of the Old Town Plan maps. Now, since the Old Town Plan is guidelines and not law, those maps might not be fully official.
Yeah, so the case here in front of this building, Trine Street, is the end of the historic district, but the preservation district goes out to the county line. That's the case in many streets around Canal Winchester. So on West Waterloo Street, you have basically Washington is the end of the historic district. The preservation district extends to the railroad tracks. It also takes in West Street back, you know, some of those neighborhoods as well.
And did I hear someone say that it really becomes the responsibility of a realtor to tell these people whether they're in the preservation district or the historic district?
The hard part of that for me, yeah, we-
I was being a smart aleck.
Oh, okay, okay. So how would someone know who's moving into our area, which district they're in?
They would not.
They'd have to look up the plan to see where they fell or when they're mailing the, if there's a way to sort. And I'm sure that it's a feel. I mean, you could use a mail merge.
Can we flag it on the utility system when they come register for water?
Mayor, would you have some?
Well, my comment to all this is, no matter where you live, you have standards to meet. And if you're not coming to find out if you can have the right to do something, then you're at fault. Building a fence is one of them. And, you know, I don't care what, what area town is, there are standards you have to meet.
Yeah, sheds.
I thought we still live in America. Got to go to the government for permission.
There are rules. We have a lot of different ordinances which have been adopted over the last 200 years almost, and they're there for a purpose.
I understand. It's just more of a state of the world that we live in. Got to ask for permission, what you want to do to your property. It's unfortunate.
Now, you don't ask for permission. You ask if it's allowable. What are, you can come in anytime and they can give you what the standards are anytime.
Mr. Shea, I agree with you, but the other side of the coin, I think, too, is, you know, talking about state of things, you know, the lack of understanding of people sometimes. And I hate to sound crass about it, but, you know, basic civics is lost to the generation, I feel like. So if we have to help them, let's help them. That's how I feel about it.
And I do, I think there's a lot of people who move into the city and who may think that, yes, they need a fence permit, but if they came from a larger district or a larger city like Columbus, they're, you know, there's, yes, they should have asked for permission. Did they probably, did they know that there's preservation districts in Columbus? It's an education piece. I'm all right with the mailer if it helps.
I assume that's just, that we'll put, like, how to go on the website and find the regulations and stuff. I mean, that's probably standard.
Generally, that's what we include. So I can read you the text of the last door hanger we did. Says, "This property is located in Old Town Canal Winchester. Old Town Canal Winchester encompasses two areas of architectural review, the historic district and preservation district. Any exterior changes to properties within this area require design review by the Landmarks Commission. It is the intent of the Old Town District to maintain, develop, and enhance the distinctive character of Canal Winchester. Before beginning an exterior project in the Old Town District, please call or visit the City of Canal Winchester to guide you through the review process. A copy of the Old Town Guidelines can be found on Canal Winchester's website or by following the link listed below."
So Ms. Jackson, another random question. Could we use a mail merge and inside the mailers for the water bill because those people live within the preservation or historic? Could you create a letter that just mail merges in? You are in the XYZ, and once a year, it goes in the mail with the water bills.
That's a good idea.
Honestly, that's a question for our third-party printer. I'd have, they would probably have to know where in the text file we send them to pull a flag to know. It's probably possible, but I, I'd have to check with them.
Gotcha. I forgot that we don't do water bills. I forgot that we don't do water bills in-house.
We don't print them.
Super, yeah, I was thinking if we did, that'd be easy, but just throwing options out. Okay, so, Mr. Shea, you're asking for us to approve that something goes out annually. Does it have to be mail, or could it be a door hanger, was it specific?
This draft says mail, but it's up to you as council.
So, Mr. Shea, would you be opposed if I said?
Yes.
Literature?
Yes, I would.
You want it to be mail?
Mail is a legal notice, and that's essentially what we're sending them.
Okay.
And the post office does a pretty darn good job. And I saw a lot of door hangers floating in the wind when I ran for office.
Yeah, I think there needs to be, there needs to be a formality about it.
Mr. Herr, a few years back, it's probably been about four years, I'd asked a question about, we were helping some folks that were moving into different developments that don't have a copy of an HOA. So don't we now carry record down at the city? If someone's moving in, a copy of the HOA for that development? If someone moves in 10 years later, they don't. So it'd be kind of the same thing, just giving people notice, moving into the town and not in an HOA, in the development. Didn't we start keeping those on, it might have been Andrew Moore that I talked to?
We keep track of copies of restrictions within developments.
Yes.
And let people know the context. We try to stay on top of the management companies for each development and give them the context for that development when they come in to pursue any work.
So that's the same type thing you're asking for, so we're helping people understand when they move in, what their rules are, just like it would be in HOA, helping people in the development, so.
Maybe we should go a step further and have like a new resident packet that we give them when they sign up for water.
Mr. Shea, I was just looking at the new residents tab on the city's website, and I'm not sure if you, and Mayor Eber, and I appreciate your comment about you should know what the rules are around any parcel that you're buying, but there's nothing obvious that would say, oh, I really need to know whether I'm in the historic district or the preservation district, or, and again, perhaps it shouldn't be obvious, but there isn't anything obvious for the average Joe, new resident. So maybe that's just an opportunity for us to beef up that, those links a little bit. Just a suggestion.
Anything further? Do I have a, don't hear anything, motion, do I have a motion to move Ordinance 22-028 to full council?
So moved.
So move by Mr. Shea, second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mrs. Amick. Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Amick?
Yes.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Buskirk?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Abstain.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to old new business. We have 22-016, City of Columbus, Winchester Pike Industrial Development Lease Flyer. I think, we'll just maybe start with Lucas.
This was actually put on the agenda at the request of Mr. Shea.
Okay. Mr. Shea?
Hello. I received this mailer, or email, from a commercial realtor that I know, and I just found it incredibly ironic that after all the lectures I received about how Columbus was never going to approve this sort of facility in that neighborhood, and here we go. Here comes 527,000 feet, and they're putting subsidized apartments right behind it. So I just wanted to share that and put it on the record for our community to know that we are looking out for their best interests, and we want to keep this community as safe and profitable and as livable as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Brings us to 22-017, Review of Landmarks Guidelines.
All right, as I mentioned before, and I, they've attached it for us for easy reference, the Old Town Guidelines are 10 years old. It has not been reviewed since 2012, so we're coming up on about 10 years, but it needs to be, there's a lot of stuff in here that I think that we could either make a little clearer or decide if this is what we're still going for. It is a long document, which is why I asked for it to be put in there, but over the next couple of months, month or two, really, I think everyone should take a look at it. And I have some suggestions, Lori and I talked about a couple of things, including fences. So, you know, do we be more specific and say, here's the ones that are approved within there, and we, you know, and make things a little easier for somebody to pick it up and know exactly what they're looking at? There is parts in there that seem a little antiquated, so I think we need to just take a look and make sure that it's still the message that we want to send to our residents while preserving the history of our town. So my request to council is to take the next couple of weeks and just review it, and let me know if you see anything that you'd like, and I'd like to compile a list of some potential changes, and then we will submit them to council for review.
Would this be looked at, at the comprehensive plan at all?
Yes.
This would be part of this, wouldn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So the comprehensive plan committee could look.
Well, it would examine what's important to the public within the Old Town area, which will then help guide any future changes to any of our documents, our zoning code or our landmarks.
So they're not, they're not reviewing this, though? They're taking the pieces that the residents have suggested, and they're going to try to implement it into it?
No, I think the intent was that we would comprehensively review the codes, which would include the landmarks guidelines.
Okay. Do we know when that's happening, and can some of us sit in and listen?
It will happen during the 10 months of planning process, which we're two months into, so within the next eight months.
Would we be able to listen in on some of that conversation?
Yeah, I believe so, yes.
Open? Okay. I'd still like for council to review some of it, though. There is some antiquated language that we could at least look at. Plus, I don't think it's ever a bad idea for us to understand the rules that we're enforcing.
This actually makes me sad, because I'm looking at a picture of bowling balls.
I know.
Mrs. Amos, have you had any conversation with Mr., I think his name is Pete Lynch, I believe he's the current chair of the Landmarks Commission, I think? Have you had any conversation with him about this?
So, Mr. Milliken and I were going to go and talk with him, we have not scheduled that yet, but we will. I think there's some good conversation, Pete Lynch, I've had other conversations with him about things that are in here, but not from a council standpoint. But I think it'd be a really good conversation to have, to see and hear some of the things that they're hearing, some of the things that they're coming up against. Yeah, I think there's a lot of little pieces that play a part in this.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
I've got one thing additional in old business. I mean, just bringing us back into the fold here on the police study, I know we've talked a little bit about where we are, and then maybe the additional communication with the Police Association and things, where are we? And then as council, we need to figure out what the next move is with, you know, coordinating with the sheriff's office and ourselves and all that, so I'll let.
Can we have this discussion during city council, so I can pull the latest email I have?
Sure.
I don't have it in front of me, so let me do that, and then we can talk about it during council?
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Yes. All right. I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there anything else, I guess, of old business?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Amos, motion to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Milliken. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mrs. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Buskirk?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Ms. Amick.
Pledge of Allegiance to the light of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, unindivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Amick?
Present.
Mrs. Amos?
Present.
Mr. Buskirk?
Present.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Milliken?
Here.
Mr. Shea?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
Time in is 7:06. First item is the approval of minutes, minutes 22-028 for July 5th work session minutes. Discussion? Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Ms. Amick, and second by Mr. Shea, roll call.
Mrs. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Buskirk?
Abstain.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Minutes 22-029, July 5th public hearing minutes. Discussion? Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Amis, and second by Mr. Clark. Roll call.
Mrs. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Buskirk?
Abstain.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Minutes 22-030, July 5th city council minutes. Discussion? Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Ms. Amick, and second by Mr. Clark. Roll call.
Mrs. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Buskirk?
Abstain.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Communications and petitions, we have 22-009, the Madison Township Police Statistics for June 2022, in your packet and part of the public record. Next up is public comments. Jim, you got anything?
Good.
Good? All right. Reports from city officials and staff. First item is Mayor Eber.
Thank you, Mr. Milliken. First of all, I want to say congratulations to Mr. Buskirk for becoming the newest city council member, so welcome aboard.
Thank you, Mayor.
I need approval for the June 2022 mayor's court report.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Shea, seconded by Mrs. Amis. Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mrs. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Buskirk?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
And for council's information, Congressman Mike Carey is going to be in Canal Winchester August the 11th, and he wanted to set up a meeting with the office, so we're going to meet, but if any council members would like to be present, I don't have an exact time and location yet, but it will be August 11th, so mark your calendars for that. And last but not least, you know, the Blues and Rib Fest, I think most of you were there, if not all of you went very, very well. We had a great weekend, good crowd both days, excellent weather. Looking forward to that weather for Labor Day, I hope. But if you have any questions about my written report, I'd be glad to answer. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Fairfield County Sheriff, Sergeant Walker.
Thank you, sir. I will have your statistics from June in the next packet for council. I was off on vacation in July, so I will have that for you. We didn't really have any incidences with the Blues and Ribs Fest. I think it went over actually really well with the amount of people that we had, so I think that went really well. That's all I've got, if anybody has any questions.
So the fight wasn't that big of a deal?
Juveniles fighting. Not even sure when it was over.
Yeah.
But, I mean, that was really it, you know, in the day and a half, so, which was pretty good, so.
Thank you for your staff.
Not a problem.
Any other questions, Sergeant Walker? Law Director, Mr. Boggs.
Thank you. I do not have a written report tonight, but did want to address a couple of questions I received about, concerned about panhandling in certain parts of the city, which is an item that we have looked into from time to time, and one of the challenges that we have from a legal perspective is that the courts have recognized panhandling as a form of protected speech, so any regulation of that becomes a matter of strict scrutiny and very hard to defend. You may recall that some years ago Columbus had an aggressive, a so-called aggressive panhandling ordinance, and they now declined to enforce that. Other cities have had similar ordinances where they had to amend them under the duress of a lawsuit and do so as part of a consent judgment. So wanted to just raise that to council's attention, that it is not a lack of trying or a lack of interest in panhandling and making sure everybody in the community feels safe. However, I would point out to anybody watching or any of you as you speak to people in the community, if people are on private property and have been told either verbally or by a sign posted on the property that solicitation, panhandling is not permitted, then that may be a trespassing issue. And so that can be a circumstance where it's a trespass rather than a matter of free speech. Also, if, I would also point out that if people are intimidated, if they feel like they're under a threat of force, then what we call a request for money under the threat of force is robbery or attempted robbery, and so that would be a good reason to call Sergeant Walker and her colleagues in the Fairfield County Sheriff's Department. Also, last thing, and then I'll take any questions that you have, do have a request for executive session this evening concerning economic development negotiations and the purchase of real property for public purposes. A storefront, restaurant, business, do they have any more, say, if there's panhandling on their, it's not their property, it's owned by someone else, they're renting it, I get it, but do they have, do they have any more lawful rights to have someone removed from the front? If the person is on the sidewalk, no. Okay. If the person is in an area that the tenant or property owner has the right to control as the property owner or tenancy, then yes. Okay, thank you.
I have one additional question. Is there any restrictions of being a certain distance away from a bank? I thought the city of Columbus had an issue with the distance from an ATM or a bank related to the finance.
That, that was part of their aggressive panhandling ordinance, and they do not enforce that any longer.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question from, for Sergeant Walker. I'm sorry, I missed my turn, but then I remembered. The, I saw this weekend at the Rib Fest that they had the drone out, which was very exciting to see, and our operator is phenomenal. Have we gotten any further along with potentially getting one for the city so that we're not borrowing one when needed, because we do have a certified operator here, is my understanding?
As far as like a deputy is a certified operator?
Yes, like they've been trained to?
So Canal Winchester doesn't have a drone operator that is assigned up here yet. I do have a quote for the mayor and everybody. I got it, I think, a few days ago, that I'll share. I think it's about $7,300 for this drone, but as far as a drone operator goes, it's kind of, it's something that they want to have to do, they can go get certified and to fly it, but we do not have any currently that are stationed in Canal Winchester.
Okay. So it's about $7,300 for the drone?
Mm-hmm.
Is that heat-seeking?
I believe it has infrared capabilities, and then it has a camera so that we can take photos, see real time, all those, and those images.
Okay. So hopefully City Council, there's a bug in our bucket, hopefully we can afford to buy a drone. They're incredibly helpful, especially when we're looking for children.
We have been, we have been in discussions with the Sheriff's Department about that.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
You're behind.
Well, I asked for it about a year ago, so hopefully now we're catching up with my original request.
So can we continue on with the panhandling for one second?
Oh, yeah.
The two areas that I've observed at the most and are owned by Casto, Lucas, is that something you could do, reach out to their leasing agent and ask them if they will post signs up?
Yeah, I'll, I'll speak with Mr. Boggs about what language would need to be included in any signage, and if maybe able to be handled with a signage, since they don't have active onsite property management, that would probably be the preferable way to handle it.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that. Is there, they've got all the retail, don't they?
They have Winchester Square Shopping Center and Waterloo Crossing Shopping Center.
Is that Kroger and Walmart?
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Okay.
They don't own, they don't own Walmart, but they own all the retail adjacent to it.
In the common areas?
Yes.
Okay. And who owns Walmart?
Walmart Real Estate.
Okay. Can we ask them too?
Yes. I believe someone has a good relationship with them, frequently, so.
Something like 43% of the time or something?
I don't know, though. Last time I asked to put no shoplifting signs in their windows, they took them down the next day, so.
Tell them if they want you to come back, they should probably put the signs back up.
That's what I'm saying.
They need signs.
Finance Director, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Milliken. Just to go back on what Mr. Clark had brought up during work session regarding a police staffing study, I did receive an email from the Ohio Association of Chiefs of Police, the mayor and I had reached out to them back towards the end of June, beginning of July, just to see if they would be interested again in performing a study. They did provide a proposal. In that proposal, the scope would be a, a police officer staffing level recommendation based on several different approaches, and that would be where we are at currently, but then also provide a recommendation for law enforcement staffing for a five-year projection. They would anticipate, once they got all the data they needed, about a 90-day turnaround, and that the total cost would be about $6,000.
Do their criteria take into consideration the fact that we service the Columbus pop, the Columbus side of population with shopping, medical, education, city services, not city services like sewer and water, but, you know, we are their commerce center, for lack of a better term, and that population, and that population becomes part of our population when they come in and they shop and they use our businesses and patron them and do services. Should that not be included in our population numbers, because that's sometimes where we're getting our enforcement issues?
That would, that could be for emergency vehicles, not necessarily a Sheriff's Department.
I guess, you know, this whole staffing is related purely to police, okay? So any, like EMS runs or anything along those, that's not included in this police staffing study?
I'm not talking about that. Let's back up, and let me say that a different way.
Okay.
Matt Peoples has always told me that, you know, when he looks at how he plans his city services and his roads and stuff, that he has to account for a population of Columbus that Columbus doesn't really service or take care of the way that we take care of our citizens here in Canal Winchester. And we have a lot of folks that share services and use our city for its city services, whether it be, or, and commerce services, shopping, medicine. I'm not talking about EMS runs, I'm talking about straight law enforcement sheriff runs, but the population that we're policing is bigger than the population that lives here, is what I'm trying to say. Does that make sense?
Makes sense to me.
We still, they still only patrol Canal Winchester City. They're not patrolling into Columbus.
I think what he's, he's trying to say is that there's people coming that are nearby that come here for a lot of various different reasons.
And, and, yes, they know that there's a daytime population and nighttime population and whatever other time there. They understand that, so they will figure all that into their study.
And I'm just asking them to, I'm asking if we're taking into consideration that most of our crime comes from outside the city, and I want to make sure that as that area grows, that we are ready and we keep this town safe, because it's one of the things I ran on, and if we're not talking about the elephant in the room, which is Columbus, we're not doing a service to our residents. So that's kind of where I'm coming from.
I think that'll be a fair question for the contractor when they come in and, you know, make their pitch, is to ask them what factor or how do they factor that in to their equation when they're looking at staffing. That is an absolutely important question that will need to be asked of them. I don't know that we know the answer to that yet until they...
I mean, this is why we're hiring someone to do this. This isn't something we can do in-house. I don't have an answer to that. I don't know how you put a number on that, to be quite honest with you, but I understand what you're saying, and they are well aware of the population growth that has and will continue to occur just north of us. We've had very honest conversations with them. This group is also very familiar with Canal Winchester. They've done some work for us many years ago, and I, they, they understand. This, this isn't a Canal Winchester only thing, the, you know, what you're referring to here, and they have all worked in areas where they have dealt with this as well, but I can't speak to their methods and how they would come up with that. They're going to look at the data, and that data is going to be what they're provided from Fairfield County and whatever other miscellaneous data they may ask for.
You know, I, I think they understand that when you have a Walmart, when you have a Meyer, and you have establishments like that, people are going to come to the outside into Canal Winchester, so I think they're well, well aware of that, and I'm sure that will be factored into there.
I want, I want to make sure it is factored into it. That's more my concern.
I think it's a good point, Mr. Shea, and thanks for your diligence on that. That's, that's our job, is to make sure that we're looking at the right things, and so if it's redundant and we expect them to do it, that's great, but, yeah, I agree. Thank you for bringing it up.
So will the next step be, what, are you going to propose legislation to, to authorize this new study or for $6,000 or what?
I mean, I guess that would be more of a Mr. Boggs question, the money's already budgeted, you know, because we had originally budgeted for the other study, that isn't occurring, so I don't know, because of the dollar amount, does council need to authorize the contract, or can the mayor just do that?
Falls under the Ohio revised code limit, so we should be good.
Right, at $6,000, that would be within the mayor's contracting authority, so, and I don't recall there being anything with that appropriation saying that it was to, you know, ex-vendor, it was just for this purpose.
Correct.
So you should be able just to do so on the mayor's inherent authority under our contracting rules.
Okay. So I guess from a staff perspective, we wanted to make sure that council was on board with this and that you did want to move forward, because this was a project that, you know, you had brought up, so.
So I guess my question would be, I hear a couple people asking questions of what the vendor will do. Do we need to, is the request from some of you to have the vendor come in just so we can have a brief conversation with them prior to, or are you comfortable with us authorizing the agreement and having it put on the next agenda? I personally would like to see specifically what their deliverables and what they're going to do, and give, you know, an opportunity for council to ask questions about things that may or may not be included in their study. Mr. Clark and I have talked a little bit about inviting the Franklin County, excuse me, the Fairfield County Sheriff's Department to come in and talk about their formulas and equations on how they determine staffing levels for a given municipality, and so I, I don't know where that landed, I don't know if we, if that's still a discussion, but I definitely want to have an opportunity to ask and understand specifically what they're going to do for us, even though the amount is relatively low, so.
No, I agree. I'm, I'd like, not, not so much for the cost, I, I don't have a problem with that, but just to make sure everybody's comfortable in being able to, to present what they would like to see in the study, if it's possible, maybe it's not possible. I've probably got some things that I'd like to see that they're going to be like, well, that's crazy, you can't come up with that, or whatever, and that's fine, but I would like to, you know, have that discussion with, with the people when we, you know, reach out to them and bring them in.
If that's the direction that council would like to go, in my opinion, this proposal is moot.
Right.
Because they're going to come in and they're going to take what you say and say, yes, we can do that, no, we cannot, here's our proposal, here's how much it's going to cost to do what you would like. If that's what council wants to do, that's fine, I can go back to them and ask them that, but I don't think that was necessarily the discussion that we had with them initially.
We didn't, we didn't have the other group come in.
Well, they came in the first time and presented, because we had to pay them $500 to come in.
But, but not everybody talked to them. That was you and me and Amanda.
That was, that was the committee, whatever you call one.
But the other group was a virtual, the, the current group.
Right, 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 was, yeah, they met virtual because of their, their, where they were from Cincinnati, but the other people, I don't know why they wouldn't come back, I mean, if they charged another 500 and then charged them, but I think we need to have that dialogue with them, because there was a lot of miscommunication with the last group with what, what the sheriff's office provided and couldn't provide, and I don't want to see that happen again. So I think there, I, I, we need to meet these people, I mean, we're, we're spending the money, we need to figure out what, what we want in this, and, and give it a shot.
I mean, they went based off of the discussions that we had the last time that we met with them, not just the mayor and I, but back when, I mean, because this is the same group that we had talked to when we interviewed the two of them.
I agree, but time, a lot of time has transpired and things have transpired, and I, I think they, they would, oh, any, any contractor worth their salt would be willing to come in and meet with a group that is, that is hiring them to, for a study like this. If they don't, if they're not willing to do that, I've got real suspect questions about them.
I don't think we're saying they're not willing to come in, we have to talk to them, I'm sure they will.
I thought you said if we asked that.
The parameters we set for them was, and this came from that meeting, was to tell us how many deputies do we need now and five years from now. That was it. That was it for both of them.
Yeah, I mean, the other one went, I guess, a little further into it, I think, with their proposal.
But not at, not at our request.
Right, right, I agree, they, because they had done a lot of these.
It was thoff, is what it was. And they lured you in, sorry.
I, well, I don't know about that.
Was there, was there an RFI or an RFP or an RFQ, were there any formalities about what was requested of them from us to them?
No, there was not. And that was what caused the big difference between the two contractors that we spoke with way back when we started this conversation.
Yeah, because clearly, I remember reading both the proposals, and one was like a page and a half or maybe a couple pages, and then one was several pages with a lot more detail. So not being part of that conversation, we didn't really know exactly what they were asked to provide, so it sounds like one was on the beefy side and one was on the lean side, so I'm not really sure what, what they were expected to provide. So maybe that would be the first step, is do we have a list of requirements for any party coming in to do this study? coming in to do this study? Was there anything?
That was all we asked them. What I said is all we asked them.
Right.
This was a council-driven process. You know, we were just sort of facilitating the behind the scenes, getting the meetings set up, things along those lines, so.
Well, yeah, I mean, and, and then, I mean, that's basically what we want to know is, and, and we're all not experts, you know, in this area. I'm, I'm not a sheriff. I'm not a police officer. So I don't know, you know, sometimes what the right questions may be to ask. But, but I'd still like to have a dialogue with them just to see what they are going to kind of put. They could come and tell us what, what they've done. How, I'd like to know how many studies have this group done? How many, you know, what, yeah, what's their background? What information are they going to ask from the sheriff's office? Are they going to be able to get that information from the sheriff's office? Those are kind of questions, I think, that need, you know, need to be hashed out before we move this.
From what I understand, the sheriff's office did provide the other group with information.
I don't think everything they asked.
That's not what the sheriff told me.
Okay. Well, I got a few questions when the other group comes that I'd like them to look into, but.
So I guess at this point, what I'm hearing is this proposal, we're not going to do anything with, but we're going to ask them to come in. Is that what I'm hearing?
I mean, what do you, I mean, I don't have a problem with hiring them if they can deliver what we ask for. I mean, I think we're pretty good on, on moving forward with it. But I think we just need that discussion to kind of hash out what, you know, what, what we're going to get, when we're going to get it, how kind of they're going to do it. And then they can explain their process and everything and how, you know, how quickly or how long this is going to be and what they need from the sheriff's office and then, and from the Madison Township Police Force. And then I think that'd be it. And then I think we can move forward with it. Is that fair to everybody?
I don't think that...
I believe that our main concern, if I remember right, and I believe I do, is that we're right-sized. And to do that, is a study that they would provide for us. So whatever group is asking whatever questions, should be able to get all answers, I would imagine. And if, if, so whatever a group is going to do that does these studies, should be able to provide, again, all the traffic coming in, all the people coming into the stores, the nightclubs, the Krogers, the Myers and so forth, take it all together, gather all that information, and let us know how many, if we are right-sized with deputies per, one per thousand or whatever it is with the commercial, with everybody coming in and, and whatever the sergeant has provided us with the statistics. Oh, now, I believe there was a downtime and an uptime. They'll take care of all of that. So I'm okay with moving forward with, to get it, to get it started. Because this has been talked about for so long that it would be nice to, to get something moving. Whether they come in and we ask them like we did before and we had the two different, we chose the one that's higher. Let's just get moving on it.
So Ms. Jackson, you're asking to put this on the next agenda. It sounds like the request from some of our newer ones who have not heard the proposal would be when we have it for approval next agenda. So if you recall, not all of council was involved in this the last time. Correct. It was a small group of you that met with them. And so it sounds to me like we're going back to that step and calling them in and starting over. That's what I'm getting out of this conversation.
So, and I'll just speak for me. I guess since I'm hearing some of the, the people who were not in the, the group that heard the original, would be to have them come in and explain their $6,000 proposal, ask any questions they have at that time, and still approve that $6,000 proposal. That would be my thoughts.
What was the purpose, what was the purpose of establishing the committee then that did that?
To try to come up with the proposal that, that brought the, the report forward. And we did, and we hired a person. And, and they, I guess they couldn't perform it.
So there's on one left.
So, right. So, I mean...
I mean, I think we need to move forward with them, but I think that there's some people who have some questions that they can't answer.
Still, to ask them some questions, I don't think would be harmful to understand the process of how they're going to do this and how it's done and what they're going to do and that.
So, okay, so you say the process. So you just said you don't know how that gets done, but they do. So if they tell you what their process is, how are you going to know if it's right or wrong?
I may not. I think for somebody to attach their name and their vote towards something, I'd bring it back to Mr. Shea's original question. If somebody has questions that they feel are unanswered that they would like to ask of this group, I, I guess, maybe I'm misreading it. I don't understand the, I guess, sense of urgency behind it. I'm okay with moving forward. It's just, you know, if there's newer members of this body that have questions, especially Mr. Buskirk, I don't see the harm in bringing them in and asking, making sure that everybody feels good about what we're doing.
But if it does start again, it has to be with a commit, with not a committee, but three people and not all of us. So it would be, get back at the beginning again to get those questions, the way I'm understanding it.
Oh, that's, I don't, no.
I think we just bring them to a public meeting. We...
We have a public meeting with all of us.
I think the mayor and Ms. Jackson have done the legwork of getting that, that quote updated to 6,000. I think it goes on the agenda for approval on the next one. But we're given the opportunity for the new people to ask just their, their questions they have.
With all of us present.
And then we move it forward, if that's a possibility.
I will contact them about coming to a meeting. I am going to say that I'm not going to hold them to this 6,000 until after they speak with you. Because they very well may want to update their proposal based on their conversations with you.
That's fair.
Yeah, that's fine.
You know, I, I will shoot for, in two weeks, but I'll see what their availability is.
That's fine.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
We set a record for the finance report, I think. Public Service Director, Mr. Peoples, is not with us this evening. Development Director, Mr. Hare.
Thank you, Mr. Milliken. A couple items to update on. So the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee had their last meeting on the 21st of July. At that meeting, they determined the branding and the website, which is CW Growing Together, which is now live. And they also had a booth at the Blues and Ribs Fest to collect public feedback. Ms. Amick, do you have anything to add to that? I know you volunteered to work the booth there.
I did. And I wasn't, I was there Friday night, not on Saturday. But I did see several pictures of the board of where they asked people, what was your big, what's your big idea for Canal Winchester? And the board was pretty much full. So a lot of general community interest. And I know I had the pleasure of inviting all kinds of demographics over to the board, regardless of, of any demographic. And people were just, once you got them going, they were more than happy to stick a Post-It note up there. So it, I think our first act, public action was pretty well received.
I'd like to say that I'm all in favor of the chocolate road that was suggested by somebody.
My favorite was sidewalks on 33.
Yes. There were some good ones.
So lots of good feedback, but they'll, they'll filter through and we'll have that summarized, probably in a document that'll go on the website. I mean, the photographs would also be typed out and summarized so everyone can read through what the big ideas were. Their next meeting is on August the 18th. And then also wanted to highlight and kind of update on the track process for the 33 Southeast Corridor. That, they were scheduled to have a track meeting to do preliminary scoring on the 27th of July. That meeting was canceled. And so their next meeting is August 24th is scheduled. But MORPC, which is the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, they're soliciting public comments in regards to the six projects that were submitted in central Ohio. And then the MORPC Board generally ranks those projects. And so I know Mrs. Woodruff has put that out on the city's Facebook page with a link to where you can supply those public comments. But I would encourage all of you to do public comments and to encourage your networks to do those as well. The more public comments we have in regards to that, the better. As I mentioned, we're one of six projects in central Ohio. But this project, the, the track project that was submitted for the 33 Southeast Corridor includes 270 and 33. It includes the Bixby Road interchange. And it includes main line widening from 270 to the Franklin County Fairfield line, which would add one lane in each direction, one additional lane in each direction. So that total project was 167 million. The request was for $31 million for the preliminary engineering, the detailed design, and the right-of-way acquisition. And so there's more details in MORPC. They've got a one-page flyer on their site, which you can see here, that explains the project. If you go to the ODOT Track website, the full application's on there that describes the project in whole. So there's a lot of information out there. I would appreciate everyone giving your support to that project and encouraging others to do so as well.
Lucas, how, how is it listed? Is it just under 270 Bixby Road Lane Widening or something?
Yeah, it's specifically called the US 33 Southeast Corridor Project.
Okay. Thank you.
Are the, the Bixby Road interchange and the two additional lanes of widening, are those two separate projects in the track process? Or is it all one project?
Yeah. ODOT District Six is the project sponsor, and they included all of those into one project. So when we were meeting with them, they were considering a project for 33 and 270. And with the close proximity of those two projects and the safety study they completed recommended widening. And so there's, they decided to combine that all into one. There's also been a federal earmark requested that has gained some traction by Representative Carey, which was a request for $3 million that was applied for by the Fairfield County engineer. And that would include, would include the preliminary engineering dollars for main line widening from Pickerington Road interchange to 270. And so I don't know if those appropriations will get through in the budget this year or not. But it has been included and it was approved by the Transportation Committee as part of the earmarks.
So if the whole project isn't approved, there goes the interchange?
It is part of a larger project. So on this, on this, this track process, that would be correct. So we would have to reapply again in the future.
Thank you.
And be happy to answer any other questions you have about anything else in regards to development.
Does ODOT District Six remember the side of Franklin County?
This is a pretty large project that would include a lot of improvements. And then there's also a District Five request for the Pickerington Road interchange for construction dollars.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Mr. Hare, the, the size and scope of a project from your recollection in the past, I mean, does that typically help or hurt a project's chances of getting approved? Or is it just kind of situational?
I mean, the, the impacts are obviously much greater when looking at as a corridor-wide improvement. But it's, I mean, there was a lot of, there was a lot of success doing that with the far east freeway improvements that were funded in the last round of track. That includes 270 out to 256 along I-70. And so there's some flyover ramps that are constructing at 270. There'll be some improvements to Bryce Road and the mergers that take place between 270 and Bryce Road. And there'll also be a new interchange constructed at Taylor Road and I-70, which is just beyond 256, which will direct traffic on the 204. And so all those were projects that were pursuing track independently. And they decided to merge all those into one, and it was funded in the last round, so.
Okay.
Do you have any idea the breakdown of the total 167 million? How much of that is just the Bixby Road interchange?
The Bixby Road interchange, I believe, was 58 million of that. But I'd have to look and confirm the exact number. But it's, it's somewhere around that 60 million.
Thank you.
Hannah, can you send us all an email to that public comment link so we can share that with all of our people? Please?
Do you have to send an email to MORPC or mail a letter? There's not an actual online form to submit, but I can send you the information.
Okay. Thank you. And then I have a question for Mr. Buskirk. Since you worked in the engineer's office, do you have any comments on the track experience?
So a lot of the, you asked the question about how they decide which one to do. There's a lot of information that goes into that. They do traffic impact studies, safety studies. And all those things boil down and give the projects different scores. And depending on how you score on a project is, determines how they choose which one. The, the comments that you can make through MORPC, those will also help to gain traction on those as well. So I'd encourage all of us to do that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hare. Onto resolutions. First is Resolution 22, 22-028. You could read that, please, clerk.
A resolution authorizing the establishment of the Gender Road Winchester Pike Intersection Custodial Fund.
Sponsor is Mr. Shea.
We need to do this so Amanda can put the money in the bank. So I would move to adopt.
Second. Motion was made by Mr. Shea, second by Mr. Buskirk. Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Buskirk?
Yes.
Mrs. Amick?
Yes.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes. Resolution 22-029 has been tabled. Resolution 22-030, sponsor is Mrs. Amos. Sorry, clerk, if you could read that, please.
A resolution memorializing the appointment of Steve Buskirk to fill a vacancy in the council pursuant to Section 3.08 of the city charter.
Mrs. Amos.
Motion to adopt Resolution 22-030.
Second. Motion was made by Mrs. Amos, second by Mr. Walker. Roll call.
Mrs. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Amick? Yes. Mr. Buskirk?
Abstain.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
And ordinance, ordinance 22-023 will also remain tabled. And second readings, ordinance 22-026. If you could read that, please.
An ordinance authorizing the city of Canal Winchester to enter into a community reinvestment area agreement with North Point Development LLC pursuant to Section 3735.671 of the Ohio Revised Code, authorizing the city of Canal Winchester to enter into a related school compensation agreement with the Canal Winchester Local School District and North Point Development LLC and declaring an emergency.
Sponsor is Mrs. Amis.
Thank you. Second reading only.
Ordinance 22-027. If you could read that, please.
An ordinance authorizing the city of Canal Winchester to enter into a community reinvestment area agreement with North Point Development LLC pursuant to Section 3735.671 of the Ohio Revised Code, authorizing the city of Canal Winchester to enter into a related school compensation agreement with the Canal Winchester Local School District and North Point Development LLC and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. And the sponsor is Mr. Shea.
Second reading.
Onto first readings. We have ordinance 22-028. If you could read that, please.
An ordinance to require notification of location in the Historic District and Preservation District.
And forgive me, I, my notes are terrible. Mr. Shea, sponsor of this one.
A first reading only.
Thank you. Onto council reports. Our next council meeting and work session is Monday, August 15th at 6:00 p.m. We have a tentative committee of the whole meeting for Monday, August 29th at 6:00 p.m. A work session council meeting Tuesday, September 6th at 6:00 p.m. And now we have CW Human Services, Mr. Walker.
There will be an elder care and memory care discussion forum this Thursday, August 4th at 6:30 p.m. Very important if you can make it. And I will ask if you have anything to add to this. Ms. Amick, please don't hesitate.
No, just please communicate and share that information with your friends and neighbors. It's a, it's a growing crisis in America, so.
Thank you. That's it.
I'm sorry. I'm not sure Mr. Shea heard. It's an elder care and memory care discussion group being sponsored by Canal Winchester Human Services this Thursday at 6:30.
Thank you. It's very important. You can judge a society by how they treat their elders.
CWICC, Mr. Clark.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Milliken. Our next meeting is August 31st, 11:30 at the City Municipal Building here in the conference room. I do need, we do need to talk about appointing, Ms. Ward was our representative to CW ICC along with myself, and we need to discuss the appointment of that, to fill that seat on CW ICC. How do we progress with that? When can we do that?
I'd like to nominate Ms. Amick.
Well, I just want to double check. Mr. Boggs, when we typically do this, this is an executive session item when a new council comes in, are we free to do this the way we're trying to proceed?
You are, you are of course free to have the discussion in public, but since it would be a discussion of the appointment of a public official, you could do it in executive session if you prefer.
Okay. Do you have a preference, Mr.?
No, I mean, I'm fine. I second Ms. Amick to the appointment, is there?
Ms. Amick, are you okay with that?
I am.
Can I, can I just clarify?
Yeah.
This is not an appointment to the board. This is an appointment as a council representative.
Yep.
Correct, thank you.
All right, is that, is that a motion?
So the motion on the floor from Mr. Shea was to, was to elect Ms. Amick to the, as the council representative to the CW ICC to serve with Mr. Clark for the remainder of the two-year term.
Thank you, Mrs. Amos. Motion was made by Mr. Shea and seconded by Mr. Clark to appoint Ms. Amick. Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Amick?
Abstain.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Buskirk?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Next item is CWJRD, Ms. Amis.
So we took a vacation month last month, so it was great. Our next meeting is August 18th at the Old Town Hall Building. We do have some things that are getting ready to start rolling out. Fall soccer's coming, which is super exciting. We have a fall ball going on this year, so it'll be the first time that CWJRD has a fall ball. For those of you not familiar, it is more of a learning experience for youth. It'll be self-umpired through the parents and through the coaches. And then we also have wrestling, getting ready to work with the coaches on getting wrestling up and running, so lots of good stuff. We're glad to see kids in sports again and adults, and adults.
I'd just like to say that the city's contribution financially to help fund the Recreation Director has been absolutely one of the most stabilizing events that's happened at any event of that program, and I hope that we as a body would continue to support it because recreation is good for our children, sports is good for our children, and there's so many values they learn there and I think it's something that our community is totally behind 100%.
That's great to hear. Thank you. Destination Canal Winchester is the chair. I have a brief statement I'd like to just read. This past weekend, Destination Canal Winchester hosted another successful Blues and Rib Fest. Destination would like to thank the City of Canal Winchester and their employees for the hard work before, during, and after the festival. They do a fantastic job each and every time in helping us make this event happen. We also want to thank the many organizations and individuals that work this event. We certainly couldn't do it without you. And we also want to thank the community who came out and attended. On a personal note, yeah, my wife and I signed up to come in Saturday morning and help do some of the cleanup and there really wasn't a whole lot to do because the city did that great of a job. I think we were there for half an hour tops, so pass Mr. Peoples and everybody else along the well wishes. The only other issue, not issue, is item, the farmer's market will return this coming Saturday, August 6th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. And with that being said, we'll turn it over to old and new business.
I have some new business.
Yeah.
I'm just chock full of ideas. You give me a month off and my brain starts running. You know, one of the things that I talked about in the Meet Candidates debate evening when we were all running for this position, well, some of us were running, was the idea of putting, requiring a special duty officer at establishments that consume a certain percentage of police time. And that's something that I want to get back out there because I think by, we need to look at that and explore that in terms of special duty policies and things like that and I'm going to go around and do some research and kind of look at it and see what's going on in other suburban communities, what their requirements are, what it is that does it. I've also got Mr. Boggs looking into it because there are certain places where they consume a lot of our police resources and at that point perhaps they should have their own officer that they are paying to be there since they're doing there. I was cautioned by Mr. Boggs how I talk about this because some of those establishments that are being robbed are the victims of crime and I'm not trying to be unsympathetic to them, but I am asking them to help with a little bit of prevention. I mean, if I thought somebody was going to steal from my house every day, I'd be sitting on the front porch with a shotgun saying, "Come on in," but that's just a different story. So I think this is something that as we continue to grow in population, we're going to continue to have issues and we want to keep a safe community for our residents, so thank you.
Sergeant Walker, question to his, to his statement, to the part that was important, that when, if you have a store or a business who hires somebody privately and off-duty, things like that, when they do get a shoplifter and they are going to prosecute, they still are required to call you to do, to process. Is that correct or can they process?
So if they hire special duty, either it be with the sheriff's office or Madison Township, that officer working that special duty would be the one taking the report, doing the charges and all that.
So it could potentially alleviate some stuff for you guys?
It could. I can tell you that almost every call that we get to Walmart is a two-man call, so that takes up two of our deputies when they go to Walmart, just because half the time that the people are stealing, they're not very friendly either. So if there's one deputy for special duty, they may need to still call a deputy over.
Okay. But it's a good point to ponder.
It's one less deputy by my math.
That is true.
Any other old and new business? Thank you, Mr. Shea. All right, hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to enter executive session to consider confidential information related to negotiations with other political subdivisions respecting requests for economic development assistance under Chapter 715 or involving public infrastructure improvements directly related to an economic development project as well as the consideration of a purchase of property for public purposes.
Second.
Motion was made by the chair and seconded by Mrs. Amis. Roll call.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mrs. Amis?
Yes.
Mrs. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Buskirk?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Testing, testing. Nope.
Oh, there's a delay.
Are we back on?
Yeah, but just hear that delay. I know, but look, I'm still looking at Shay.
Uh, whatever.
Now I'm poorly. There's a delay.
Where am I?
You're right there.
Well, they can hear us on the stream, so we'll go with that. I don't know what's happening with the microphone.
Time in from executive session is at 8:54 PM. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Amos, second by Mr. Shay. Roll call.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Shay?
Yes.
Mrs. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Buskirk?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes. Congratulations, Steve.
Thank you.